Okay, we are at seven o'clock. Um, I see. Is there anybody else waiting to come in, Julie?
Um, no, actually, we didn't do a waiting room on this one.
Okay.
So, um, I do have a bunch of people that are not identified. They don't have their full name on the screen, so I don't know who they are.
Okay, so I think we're looking for, uh, N Squire thirty-three?
Yes.
So, N Squire thirty-three, could you identify yourself?
Uh, yes, Craig Squire.
I was hoping that was you. Thank you for joining us, Craig.
Sorry, it's kind of hard to hide.
I'm sorry about that. Well, it's just for the, for the roll call, just for attendance, because this is the meeting. Um, and it looks like, uh, Kim Patripka is also on there.
Anne's iPhone?
Yes, it's Kim.
Hi, Kim. And then Anne's iPhone?
Yes, Anne Barrett.
Hi, Anne. Thank you for joining us.
Absolutely.
And then we have Joe. Joe Q.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Great. Yep, Joe Coranta. Julie? Okay, I think everyone else is identified, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, it's seven oh one. Um, and I hope everyone had a chance to look over the minutes.
I did.
Yes.
Questions, any issues?
Yep, none.
None. Yeah, no, no questions.
Um, I, the only thing that I found, uh, when I looked through with it, um, and I just need to make an exception on it, um, the tables and chairs for the meeting room have not been ordered, um, under Town Hall upgrades on page two oh five. They haven't been ordered. We were looking into it. They still haven't been ordered, though. And that's still.
Do you want me to amend that, that they have not been ordered?
Correct, if you don't mind.
No problem.
Thank you, Julie. Other than that, I have no other problems. So I, do I have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve minutes as amended.
Second?
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Okay, um, tax collectors report. So we actually do have, uh, some refunds going on, um, this month, actually a total of six thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Uh, most were, actually all were under a hundred dollars, most of them under fifty dollars. There is one, um, for six thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars and ninety-five cents, biggest one I've seen, uh, because it was a double payment of taxes, so that had to get refunded. Um, so that's been entered into record.
I'll make a motion to approve those six items on the agenda for tax refunds.
Thank you very much.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, gonna move to communications from the public.
Okay, so is this where we can speak? Am I?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I would just like, yes, okay, I am. And I would just like to thank the Board of Selectmen for hosting the Town Hall meeting, uh, to address traffic issues on Weller's Bridge. Um, and I would really like you to consider the combination of, of speed tables and, um, extending the green as an option, uh, extending the green with Weller's Bridge ending at South Street. And, and I hope that whatever measures you decide upon are implemented soon. Again, thank you very much for addressing the issue.
I appreciate your input. Thank you, Alice.
Yeah, thank you.
And that is, uh, on our topic for tonight, so, uh, we're gonna kind of go over some of the things that were, uh, that were discussed, so that'll be coming up, uh, as, uh, item number seven on business. Is there anything else?
Meredith, is that you? With your hand up?
It was, uh, actually Kealan had her, um, so Kealan Daly, I see you have your hand up.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I, I want to support my sister, but also, I was thinking after the last meeting that we had, is there a potential that maybe we could put, um, like, something simple that's cost-effective? Uh, in the distance, if we're, I love the idea of extending the green, but assuming that maybe that's like not going to happen tomorrow. We could take wooden horses and make the stretch between South Street and in front of your house, Patrick, one way, and maybe alternate the directions according to the traffic, or just try that out without doing anything that's costing us a fortune, and see if that doesn't just limit the volume, speed, whatever. And, and last week, when we were talking, Teresa had a really good point, I think, about the view, and she drove in, and everybody should see the beautiful view on Weller's Bridge, and I wanted to say that I don't think any of us want to limit people having access to the drive or the road, but just the volume, the speed at which they travel, and the quality of life along the road. So things that would just kind of play to that. So I was thinking, maybe there are ways to do without doing anything radical.
Sorry.
Okay.
Yep.
I appreciate the input. I'm gonna kind of hold that as just a comment for now, because we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna join that, uh, on the call a little bit later, but I, I really appreciate, and honestly, the, the turnout for that call was fantastic, and there were some great ideas. So we're gonna discuss those a little bit later. So thank you for your input, Kealan. Uh, anyone else?
Okay, I'd like an opportunity, Patrick, if possible.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I just wanted a request of the Board of Selectmen, um, in one of our wetlands meetings, there was some things that were discussed outside of the, uh, meeting agenda, and we've put in a couple of requests to have those, um, statements redacted via email. I don't want to get into the particulars here, but I just want to ask you guys to look into that and see if that's something that we could facilitate.
Uh, Joe, it's, can't be redacted. It's on, it's, it's not legally possible to redact it.
Okay, would you be willing to, would you be willing to?
Would you be willing to? I, I didn't interrupt you.
Would you be willing to make a statement that, um, the things that you said, you're, you're, you, you redact them in another meeting?
You interrupted me before I could finish. I would like some respect. When you emailed me and complained.
Russ, Russ, you, you're, you're asking for my respect. Okay, and I, and I, and I've given you, listen, I appreciate the apology that you made at the last wetlands meeting, okay? And I appreciate that. Thank you for doing that, okay?
Joe, can I say my piece?
No, let me finish. You were, you were, listen. I'm, I'm sorry that you think this is funny, because I don't, I don't think it's funny, Russ.
It's funny, Joe.
And I, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't appreciate the fact that I've got a select, a, a select person laughing at me.
Well, because you won't let me finish. You're not respecting me.
Well, you haven't let me finish, okay? I appreciate your apology.
I started the clock, you went to rough to me. I'm, I'm gonna shut out, down on this.
Are we gonna, are we gonna just continue with the conjecture, Russ?
No.
Just redact your statements. You were wrong.
Let me know when he's gone. Thank you.
You were wrong, Russ.
Patrick.
Okay? You don't have to sign off. All right, well, regardless, I'm sorry that you guys had to experience that, okay? And I, and I'll be a little bit more specific now, okay? Apparently, there's an issue with some wetlands, um, in the area of one ninety-nine and Judd's Bridge Road. Those, uh, situations have nothing to do with my family and I. And Russ had made quite a few statements, and I believe it was the January, well, I don't know if it's twenty-fifth, but it was the, it was the, yeah, maybe the twenty-fifth. It was not the last meeting, the meeting before, that Russ made a, a, you know, a, all kinds of statements, um, about our property, um, things that we're doing, talking about an application that, um, would, they never received. We never even filled out an application, so we weren't on the agenda. We weren't asked to come. We weren't there to defend ourselves, and all of the information that was presented, quite honestly, was false. So, as, you know, Russ, Russ called and apologized, and he apologized in a meeting, and I really appreciate that, okay? But you gotta understand that, you know, we have neighbors here in town, and we don't want to be pinned against our neighbors for things that we didn't do. You know, we, we reached out to the Wetlands Commission to seek out their help, because their ultimate responsibility is to preserve and protect our wetlands. We followed the protocol. You guys expect us that when we're gonna do anything in a wetland, that we reach out to our local Wetlands Commission, and that's what we did. But we didn't get the level of service that we expected, okay? We never filled out any applications, and I'll tell you why. Because every time we have to work with wetlands, okay, it's always a problem. It's always a problem. Like, we should be able to call in and ask our Wetlands Enforcement Agent to come out and to look at an issue. We suffered a significant washout next to our agricultural little crop, right? And so, that's a big impact for us. So, we just wanted to get together and figure out what caused it, because it wasn't our cause, right? Was there a flow increase out of the head wall coming off of Judd's Bridge? Was it the state's paving job in their basins? Was it something that changed upstream? It's not my responsibility to go tromping around my neighbor's property to figure those things out, okay? And so, that's all I'm asking. And all I'm asking is that, if, you know, we're gonna be discussed in a meeting, a, 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 a potential application that may, at some point, come before a meeting, notify us, put it on the agenda, follow the proper protocol. And so, I, I, I hate to throw this on you guys, but what I'm asking is that, you guys look into this and see if there's a way, and it, look, I'm not asking you to take something out of the minutes, if that's an illegal thing, okay? But it's, a statement can be made, a redactment can be made in the next meeting and say, you know, I, I, I make a motion to redact my comments, because they were false. It was out of line, and it wasn't on the agenda. So that's all I'm asking for you guys to look into that. Thank you for some time tonight.
No problem, Joe, and we, uh, I, I know you've been following up, and we will continue, uh, to follow up. That's not, that's not a question.
Let me just add that, you know, Patrick, you've been great in all this. You know, I, this, I don't want anyone to, to think and get any kind of misinterpretation that, um, I have any issue with you, or, or really anyone else, for that matter, because you've gotten back to me, you've done everything that you said that you, you were gonna do, and I appreciate that. But I can't say that I've got that level of service from the wetlands, you know, from, from really, you know, the chairman of, of the Wetlands Commission. So, um, like I said, if you guys could look into that, it would be super.
We will continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Um, okay, so, uh, I'm gonna need to, uh, I'm gonna try and get Russ back on. I'm sorry for the delay, everyone. Just gonna give it another minute, if you guys don't mind. Thank you for your patience. Okay, I guess, uh, uh, well, there would be no waiting room, Julie, correct? So he would pop right back on if he was.
He should pop right back in.
Okay. I'm gonna try and continue, uh, the meeting, uh, if we can, Kim.
Yep.
We still have our Commissions and Boards appointment, uh, Conservation Commission, expiring six thirty-two thousand twenty-three, um, as well as Museum Board of Trustees, vacancy expiring eleven thirty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-five. Those are still, there's still no applicants for that, um, so I'm gonna move to just, uh, delay that for another month, and we might be up again another month. Um, okay.
I just had a question. So, uh, in the next newsletter, um, for the, the email newsletter, can we put that in? I think we've probably been periodically doing that. I, I would say to put that in, the, both of those.
Got it. Okay. Um, okay, so the, uh, the next thing was the, uh, town meeting that we had, just an update on that, uh, which went very, very well. It was a, uh, one of the longest town vote meetings that we've had in a long time. It was a whole twelve minutes. I appreciate everyone. I know, they usually don't last that long, um, but it was, uh, it was nice, you know, we had already, I, I liked the, uh, process of it. I liked the fact that we had forums before it, um, that we were, you know, pretty open, as we said we'd be, um, and then the town got a chance to vote. So, uh, the cannabis prohibition has, uh, passed, um, by a, a, a pretty good margin. ARPA and the grant money, um, all passed unanimously, uh, so in a few more days, uh, those will become, uh, true ordinances.
And how long does that take? Um, when, when does, uh, the cannabis particular, like, as an example?
Yeah, oh, fifteen days. So fifteen days following the twenty-fourth is when it actually becomes. So, uh, there is no law until then, there is no ordinance until then.
Okay.
But I do want to thank all the town people. Actually, there was, uh, for, uh, most of the town meetings, there's not much attendance. Um, this was actually pretty good. There was quite a few people there, so it was nice to see the turnout, and it was nice to have the support.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, yeah, I think we've, uh, lost, uh, Russ for the night, unfortunately.
Okay.
Um, but I do have, uh, I wanted to talk about the, uh, Weller's Bridge Road Public Forum, um, as well as, uh, Baker and Century Hill. Um, a lot of, uh, wonderful ideas brought up. Um, I have been, uh, continuing my conversations, uh, with Matt, our resident trooper, and Bill. Yeah, continuing on that, um, I really like the idea of adding, uh, more signage, um, some speed signs, so we can actually track, uh, the volume and the speed, especially in both downhill slopes.
Right.
So, uh, this would be west of Hemlock, uh, going, yeah, going west down the hill, and then the other one would be, um, going down the other hill, heading towards South Street, um, for speed signs, uh, as well as, I thought it was a great idea, um, for the no trucks, like a flashing sign like we have on the green, um, on the other side.
So I actually look at that, and we don't need one. There is a sign coming from New Milford that already has a big yellow with a, saying, "No trucks, no right-hand turn." I don't, you know, if, if they're blind, if they can't see it, I, I don't, just don't think that they're, you know, I think they're just choosing not to. It, it's very clear, so it.
So it's not an information thing, it's just a blatant disregard for?
Yeah.
The sign, okay.
It's called a ticket. I think that's what it's.
Exactly.
Is a ticket. But I don't believe we need to add flashing lights and, you know, have light, you know, I just don't think we need it, um, because it's big. It's actually a good size. There isn't one coming from the other way, but really trucks are coming from New Milford and, and coming up Weller's Bridge.
Correct, correct. Yeah, no, I, I know what you mean. You mean coming south on sixty-seven, in a southerly direction. So that way, yeah, correct. There's nobody that turns that way. If they've already gone around, they've already gone around.
Exactly.
I did get into, um, uh, looking at, uh, temporary, uh, speed tables, so we could possibly try it out. Um, I like the idea. These would be, uh, basically, uh, low-impact, we're looking at fifteen to twenty mile an hour ratings, um, but if you hit them, you'll know it, um, and they're more gradual. Um, and I'd like to, because I, I haven't got a, 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 a great answer from Public Works of whether they're going to be ripped up and how the plowing is gonna happen, um, and especially on a highly-traveled road. Um, that was one of the concerns. So I'd like to, once the, uh, snow season goes away, and we're pretty much done, which is not long, we're looking at another month. Um, it's gonna take a little while to order these. I mean, it's probably gonna be two weeks before we can get them and set them up. Um, right now, temporary speed, uh, bumps are gonna be a little over eighteen hundred dollars per.
Right.
Um, these are twenty-two and a half feet long, um, and they go across the entire road. Again, the ideas are, you know, going down the hill, um, from Hemlock, heading west, uh, before the corner. Um, the other, oh, and look, Russ is back on, so I'm glad to see he's there.
Okay.
So we'll, uh, continue this conversation.
Okay, good.
Um, okay, so the, the speed bumps, again, I'll just say, are, uh, around eighteen hundred dollars. Um, we'd have to add, uh, signage to that as well, um, because you'd have to warn people, um, according to DOT. Um, I, my personal views on this, and I want to hear your both, uh, views as well. Um, I'm worried about making anything one-way or one-direction intermittently, because it would just be tough to police, and I'm just worried about more accidents, uh, because I don't think people are very safe to begin with, and if we make it more confusing, I'd be concerned that we'd cause more accidents. Uh, but that's just my personal belief. I mean, you guys heard the, uh, feedback on it, Kim, Russ. Um, I, I want to know your opinions.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't think that we should mess around with the one-way. Um, I don't think we should be blocking the road. Um, it's a, it's, you know, we need to travel, um, both directions, and, uh, I don't remember who said it, but it was a very, um, positive and, um, open, uh, comment from a resident who lives on Weller's Bridge, who said, you know, "Let's just try something. Let's just see how it goes, and we're willing to, you know, um, experiment." You know, as, as a resident of the street, so I, I, I think that's important. But in terms of one-way, I just don't see that as a, as a good option, both safety-wise and, uh, you know, and monitoring, just as you said, I, I just think, I don't think we can enforce that easily.
Okay.
I'm totally in favor of the speed tables and, um, trying those out, especially, you know, after snow season is over, and getting a handle on that, and, and seeing what happens, and then monitoring the, the traffic, um, from the, uh, of, the device that, you know, is monitoring it currently to see what the change is.
Well, there, they, apparently both are, both areas have had previous speed signs before.
Yeah.
And there's permanent wiring to them. Um, so it's actually gonna save a little bit of money. Right now, the speed signs that hold data, um, are gonna be about twenty-five hundred dollars each, uh, two hundred dollars shipping. Um, just so you know. So, you know, I think it's a, a multifaceted thing where we can approach it on different levels. Um, okay, so, uh, Russ, what are your thoughts after, uh, the Weller's Bridge meeting?
Well, I agree with both of you. One way is, is, is no way. You know, I, I want to listen to everybody, but I think that Sarah Loria gave a good, out of anybody in that town meeting, gave the best reason why this shouldn't be done, uh, speed tables and, because of public safety. And for me, public safety has to come first. I understand going around sixty-seven's an option, but that's not public safety easy, because sixty-seven is dangerous, and if you put more, um, traffic on sixty-seven, you're gonna have more problems. And again, what my mantra's gonna be, public safety. But I'm willing to listen. I, it depends on where the, where the speed tables are, things like that, you know, the details. Uh, I agree with putting up the sign. Uh, these speed signs slow me down, makes, makes me aware. I think a lot of people aren't speeding because they want to, they're, it, it's just a straight road. It is a major artery, as is Squire and all the other roads I mentioned the other night, and major arteries really shouldn't be blocked because of, uh, public safety. And that's my opinion, but, um, I'm willing to listen. Uh, we went through this before. I feel like it's deja vu. Uh, we went through this before, maybe five years ago. And, and Barbara did things, and the board did things, like the stop signs that flash and, uh, trucks, you know, that, there were things that were done, but we were talking, and I don't know why it didn't go anywhere, about speed bumps, or speed tables, better word, um, before the stop signs. And I, I would not be opposed to that. I, I understand the residents on the road have a real concern, and I respect that. Um, but I also have to respect everybody else in the town who, who's paying for the road, right? So, we did a, a dog park, um, vote. We did it for a dog park. Um, I, I think it might be a good idea to just do that again for Weller's Bridge and get a better view of what the whole town really thinks. Um, people say to me, when I say to them, "You weren't at the meeting for Weller's Bridge Road." You know, "You gotta speak out, and, you know, I'm raising kids, I get home late at night, and that's what I, and, and that's what I elect you for." And I, I get that. I, I understand that. That's why you, you, you have a voice, because you elected, uh, three people to make decisions. I think the, I think what Kim and Pat are doing that's different than the former board is, you, you're more open, you're having these meetings. I think it's great. But I think a vote, uh, minimum two, two votes per household, um, I think that's an idea, just to get a better sense. And if the whole town, doesn't need to be everybody's in favor or against, but it'll give us a sense of what the whole town is thinking.
Okay. Um, I agree, and, and if, as we've always done, this Weller's Bridge has always included, uh, Baker Road and Century Hill. Um, I am concerned with pushing traffic around that corner. I drive it pretty much every day now, as I go around, uh, that river, and it's just pretty concerning, and now there's, uh, even some potholes. So, I'm gonna continue to work on that front. That, that corner needs to be opened up. We need better sightline. It needs to, you know, I, I, there was, uh, Elaine Curly said that her car broke down, and I'll tell you what, if my car broke down on that corner, uh, of Century Hill, I would leave it and run away. Um, because it's, because I would, there's nothing good that can happen. If a truck comes around, they can't stop. There's no visibility. I would let the car be totaled, um, because I wouldn't know what to do, and I, I wouldn't want to stay there, because it's that unsafe. And when you actually sit there and look at it, which I have, it's, it, it is concerning. Um, and I would say if, uh, and I've been kind of saying that, um, if we did any permanent speed table or anything, I would want that to be a town vote. I feel like that should go right to a town meeting, Russ. I totally, totally agree. But I thought that's where, you know, we, to Kim's statement earlier, I want to try something.
Right.
You know, I want to make a difference. There's two issues. It's people stopping, and it's people speeding on that road, and it's just too dangerous. So, I mean, that's where I was suggesting, um, so there's three spots that we could possibly put a temporary speed table that go on asphalt and all, and that's, um, just east of Hemlock. Um, between that, the, the house that's on the north hand, there's only one house on the north side, uh, was Pete Gurney's house, if you know who that is, uh, but it's kind of in between Hemlock and the crest of the hill. Um, the other one is going down, heading west from Hemlock. Um, after you, it straightens out before it goes around the corner. That's another spot. Um, and then coming down the hill to South Street would be somewhere else. Um, and it would have to be signed, and actually, I do have a picture, if I can get this to go correctly. It's a gradual speed table, something like that.
I think, um, had you mentioned that these are, um, they're less than, what's, what's the vertical displacement, that term we've now used?
I will be under two inches.
Yeah.
Under two-inch vertical displacement, which is considered low-impact. You're looking at something, um, that's gonna have a fifteen-mile-to-possibly-twenty-mile-an-hour rating. Um, but you'll, you'll, you'll definitely feel it. Um, our whole goal, just like having, um, the police there and giving that impression of control, is just to correct behaviors. We want people to slow down. We want people to understand that we live here, you know, and, and, and it's the stopping and the speeding. I don't know that we can control the volume, but
Yep.
Um, at least until Century Hill is corrected.
Right, right. If you correct Century Hill, you may solve the problem.
I'm hoping.
Yeah, that would be wonderful, wouldn't it? It really would.
And I would really like to get Century Hill fixed before Weller's Bridge is taken down. You know, before that goes under construction.
Well, yeah, that, that makes sense, because.
Yeah, that'll be a nightmare, otherwise, I think.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Oh, my gosh, yeah.
The people on Weller's Bridge Road will be very happy for six months.
Yeah, I think we should have a.
Be walking your dog in the middle of the road.
Block party and a dance.
But, but I, I hear those people. I, I, I am concerned about emergency services, and I want to make sure that, that they're in, they're in for this, that they, they agree. They're the ones who have to deal with it.
And I think that, um, those, the, the units that Patrick's looking at, um, because they are low-impact, meaning they are, it's not the tall ones like they have down at, uh, New Milford Green, uh, it's like, I don't know, it was, it's a fraction of that.
Right.
But I think because they're bright, uh, they're gonna be visible, people will get a reminder to stop at the stop sign. I think that's what's going to make a big difference, too, having been, trying to come out of Hemlock Road myself, um, and almost getting hit on a horse in the car, uh, was people just blaring past without even thinking about it. And a lot of that came up, I know, at the, um, at the town info session. session about this, of people being in that same situation. So, I, you know, if we just give it a shot, you know, and be, that they won't be permanent, there'll be something we can try and, and see what happens and then have.
Thing is, it's non-committal. I agree. It's non-committal. So it's something that it, it nails into the asphalt.
Yeah.
Um, and we can try a few for a while and see what you guys think. Um, if it, if it's effective, then great. Um, I would agree even when there's, you know, we've been doing this blitz for a while and I have noticed there's been a, of, you know, a, a significant difference in the volume and speed. I can't say that it, there hasn't been. I can see it. Uh, but even at night, you know, early this morning, there were cars blowing through the stop signs.
Yeah.
Or not, you know, with, with no regard for stopping at all. And that's just intentional. You know, that's just intentional. You're talking about an intersection, you know?
Honestly, I, I, I've talked to the two people that don't live in town who actually had a conversation and I heard it and so I told them what I thought about it, but they said when they're heading toward Bridgewater, they gets, after they go through the, the intersection at Hemlock Road and, uh, Rocky Mountain, they take their foot off the brake and they go down that windy side of Wellers Bridge like it's a slalom course for fun. And it's just horrifying to me to think about people doing that because they.
I know. And I, I, I think if there was that, you know, something before you get into that hill, you know, it'll slow you down in between the two hills.
Yeah.
Now, our, our, our goal is to, and then if, you know, if this does work out and it works out great, then I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of going to a town meeting and, and having the people speak. And I, I realize that even right now, um, even just with temporary and some of the other things we're going to do, I'm going to have kickback, but I'm willing to stand behind the residents of that road and what they've said, uh, and stand behind the residents of our town to do the right thing. So I'll take whatever flack comes that way. I'm not worried about it.
But Patrick, what I was talking about was a vote that we did for the dog park, which was online, non-committal vote. It was online. Jimmy, Jimmy set it up. And it was an online question sent out through the Roxbury Blast to just a simple vote, yes or no, are you in favor of speed bumps or not? In this case, it, it was, are you in favor of a dog park at, um, Apple Lane?
Right. I remember that.
And it was pretty close.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, the blowback caused the student, the senior student to back it. The, we recommended Sherman Park. Um, and he decided to pull the whole project, which was unfortunate, but, uh, it showed it was a fifty-fifty split really about the dog park.
I think it would be interesting to hear what people have to say after they try the road with the temporaries. I'd like to know that.
No, that's a great idea, Kim.
Yeah.
That's a great idea. Put them out there and then ask people, uh, before you have a town meeting, you know?
Yeah.
So what are you thinking? Two, three? Like, I mean, I laid out a, a plan for three. Um, but.
Three.
Okay, so.
I'm fine with three. I think two, but I'm not going to argue semantics.
And so we, we may or may not, we probably will not have them, uh, installed for our next board of selectmen meeting. Uh, unfortunately, because, uh, I, we, we may still have some type of weather event.
Yeah, right. You don't want to do this till May, Patrick, the way it's going. Where, what was that last storm? It was a sandstorm, I think.
It was just, there's so much ice. There's so much ice.
A slate. That was like moving cement.
Yeah, so.
Tomorrow dirt roads are going to be bad, Russ. Uh, rain tonight and it's going to uncover all the dirt. So I apologize.
Sandman, I gotta get my boys to school.
I, we're already waiting for it. I, I already.
I don't want a sled ride down my hill.
Okay, so the first topic, and just to be clear, uh, I'm purchasing three, uh, of these temporary, uh, speed humps. Um, the other part of it would be two street signs, uh, basically for three thousand dollars apiece. One on either side going downhill, um, so that they can collect data as well. So we can see what the volume of cars and the speed of traffic.
And so those will be the signs that tell us that what speed we're going.
Exactly like what's on South Street and three seventeen over by Maple Bank. Um, some of the signs actually give statistics. Uh, some of them don't. Um, these ones I would want that because I want to be able to track this.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
All right. Um, I, I know that they had been up there before. I know they got vandalized. They got shot at, um, all different things. Um, we're buying these ourselves so we can insure them. Um, so if anything happens to them, we will put in an insurance claim and replace them.
Oh, that's great.
So.
Any way to put a.
That have been done.
Could we put a Ring camera on it?
You know, they've, they've said that if, if, uh, we wanted to do something with like a hunting camera or something that's motion sensitive, I'd be okay with that.
I think that's a great idea.
I think any neighbor on that road, uh, would appreciate that and we'd love to help out with that. Actually, I know one, uh, going down the hill that's very excited. He's the one that wanted, uh, Bill Carrio to just sit in his driveway.
Yeah.
That was, so I know he'll be helpful because I do worry about that. We want to, we want to just, you know, we want to correct the behaviors. This isn't about giving tickets or anything, although there were a lot, and I'll get to the state police report later. Uh, more tickets, which is definitely worth. Um, okay. So any other discussion, buying speed signs, buying, uh, temporary speed tables?
I'm, I'm, I'm not really in favor of speed bumps in all of this, but I'm willing to listen and willing to try. So, so I will make a motion that you, you purchase these and we try them out. Condition on the, um, that we do have a vote, a month after they're installed online for the town. So we could get feedback from people on what they think.
That's a great, that's great timing. That's a very good idea. Yeah.
Love it, Russ.
Yep.
Love it. Like a survey monkey or something.
Yep.
Got it.
Well, Jim knows, um, Pat, he's, he's awesome. Jim, Jimmy's awesome. He did the dog park thing. He's awesome.
Yeah.
And he set it up. It wasn't survey monkey. It's something he did. So you need to talk to him.
I got it. I got it.
But that's my motion.
All right. By the way, thank you for all that. And it was great to hear from the town and I'm sure we're going to continue to hear from the town and we're going to continue to listen. So thank you guys for being open to this.
Right.
You need, you need a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Get to go shopping. Um, okay. So then, uh, next thing on the agenda, town hall upgrades. And I'm going to default to Julie real quick. I think you're going to share your screen hopefully.
I am. Can you see it?
Only that little picture.
Yeah.
There are others.
Well, we're seeing your screen, not your pic, that the picture blown up.
You need to click the picture.
Yeah.
Now, because I have it blown up over here.
Hey, we, we don't have that.
All right. So maybe get out of that and then, then bring the picture up and then share. Is what I find.
Nice.
Okay. So this, this is actually, this cat, this wall, uh, has no cabinets. If you walk in from the hallway, you would be looking straight ahead to what would normally be just a blank wall. Um, this just moves the stove over to the other side and makes it more of a U kitchen. Can we go to another photo?
Doesn't let me skip, so let me stop this.
Yeah.
And let me restart it.
Nope, we're back to all of them.
So Pat, can you cook? Is that why we're doing this?
I can. Actually, I made some killer las, I made three killer lasagnas the other day that I gave out to all my neighbors. I'm sorry I missed you, Russ.
No wonder why you won.
Okay. So this is, that's a better look. So, uh, the stick stays in the same place. The stove moves around. Um, there's pullouts drawers. Um, I, I knew some, I know some people in the home improvement business still. Um, and this, this is, uh, going to be, you know, way under budget for where we are. Um, I've got other prices, you know, from depot and then a custom cabinet. Um, but what we have here and, and it kind of goes with the theme of what the town hall is. These are gray, uh, cut painted countertops, all hardwood plywood construction with pullouts. Um, white, uh, like a solid surface quartz, uh, countertop. Um, if you notice, I bumped out a couple of the profiles to give it a little bit more character. Um, and it's going to, like I said, it's going to come in way under budget. Um, so it's, it's an upgrade to something that hasn't been done to the town hall for a while. Um, we approved this, uh, over a year ago with Board of Finance. So we had the money that was already assigned. Um, the only difference in this picture, I do like the subway bat tile backsplash, which is cost-effective way to go. Um, the floor is going to be more of a weathered wood look. Um, but it kind of fits with the character, uh, you know, of the, uh, town hall. But give me your opinions, guys. What do you think?
It's great.
Straight, yeah. Great job.
Okay.
You're going to change, so the flooring's going to be, uh, changed.
It would look more like a gray tone, like a weathered wood, uh, kind of tone. Um, it's going to be an interlocking vinyl, you know, something that's going to endure, um, over time. But, uh, I was, uh, you know, what, what we have now in the laminates and what's, it's breaking apart. And I just have a problem with particle board and things. So this is all plywood construction. You know, it has the cabinet ends, but ultimately it's a box kitchen. It's not, you know, uh, it's not a custom kitchen by any means. Uh, but just by bumping out some of the profiles, I think it looked, uh, it helped it, uh, change.
Oh, I think it's great. I mean, the other space right now is, uh, hardly utilized. So I think the L shape or the, uh, the U shape is the way to go for sure.
Yeah. Great job.
And I'm hoping now that, you know, uh, now that COVID is over and we can start using it, um, we have the functionality, um, with, uh, the zoom, uh, interactive zoom hybrid capabilities. Uh, as a matter of fact, zoning is going to be our first, uh, meeting that's going to be done as a full hybrid. Um, so that's our test and honestly, the technology is amazing. So this is just, you know, freshening up what we had. Um, and then the next thing we'll hit is, uh, the bathrooms, but none of this has been touched since the building, uh, has been built and, uh, they've been dealing with it for a while. So I'm excited to make this happen for them.
Yeah, it's great.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. Julie, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
There we go. Um, today, uh, also just from a, from a town hall update standpoint, um, our new admin, uh, for, uh, for the first selectman, Sarah Foreman started today. I'm very excited about that.
Yeah.
And also, uh, down at Public Works, Corey McGwin also started today. Uh, and it's very exciting to have them and a fresh set of eyes and a new energy. Um, some, some new people. So I'm wishing them luck in their new, in their new positions.
That's excellent.
And thank you to Judy and Floyd for their excellent services to town for.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So long. Uh, and good for them, uh, to be able to retire.
Yeah.
Which I can't. So I'm jealous.
All good. All good. Um, okay. So the next, uh, we got to, we got to kind of talk about the next one. I'm not sure how to, how to, uh, do this, but, um, we've had, uh, I had someone reach out to me. Um, and this is, uh, he's actually on the call, uh, Craig Squire. Uh, he's the son of Chuck Squire who owns property on the corner of Rainy Hill and North Street. There's a house and then on North Street, just south of the house, there's a two acre lot which sits almost across the street from the town hall.
Well, it's actually from the, it's, it's from, uh, from the cemetery.
It would be across from the cemetery, almost kitty corner. Um, actually, if you're familiar with my office, I'd be looking at it, you know, straight out here. Um, it is a, you know, one of the few lots in town. It's grandfathered into build, um, left downtown. Um, and both Craig, the son and, uh, Chuck's daughter Anne both called me, uh, and they would love it to stay within the town. Um, that's something that they, they would wish if we could do something, um, to put a deal together.
And so this could be property, uh, this is adjacent to, uh, Russ, it's to, adjacent to Marie White's old place.
Oh, okay.
Right next.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I know. I was like, how do I say that? Yeah.
Yeah, I, I didn't know how to, there's no address on it either. So it's not.
Yeah.
So this is, um, there's, uh, the, the market than Marie White, then the property after that.
Correct.
And, and what, what is it they want to do?
Sell it.
They'd like to sell it. It's a separate lot from the house as it is.
All right. So it's an, it's an empty lot.
Yeah.
Now, we're not buying a house, right?
We're not buying a house.
I'm opposed to that because years ago, and thank, thanks for Wendy Walker, that she lives there, but years long time ago. Uh, the town bought that house and they sold it at a loss. And I don't think towns should be in the real estate business.
I agree.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Russ. Absolutely.
So we buy this two acres and what do we do with it?
What about the, uh, EMS? Right?
It, there is things that it could be used for.
Ambulance.
Reason why I asked is if you're going to use the, uh, land acquisition fund, then we're, we're limited. Unless you want to do affordable housing there.
Correct. And so just for everybody else's knowledge, so, uh, if we do use that, um, it would either have to be open space, recreation or affordable housing is the only thing the, uh, land acquisition fund can be used for. Um, I just, I want to bring it up, not just because, um, you know, of the, of the wishes of, you know, of the, the Squire family, uh, but also it's a, a, a rare and very valuable piece, um, especially to the town with its location.
Yeah.
And, you know, but again, the land. Yeah.
Yeah.
So what do you guys think?
Uh.
I, I need time to work this in my head.
Okay.
So we're not going to preserve it. We're not going to use it for recreation or, or, um, any, or affordable housing, but we want to buy it to have it. Um, because you never know, right?
Correct.
Is that, okay.
Correct.
And I feel the same about Fran's property. I, I always felt the town should, when, if, if Fran offers a fair price, we've offered Fran, um, more than the assessed value, but he was way over in the past. But that would be, and, and there would need to be an environmental assessment.
Oh, my God.
Of course.
Um, and that's when he, you know, um, so but the, the, yeah, yeah, I, 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 I agree with it because I think, um, the town needs to own more property for the future, even if we don't know what we're going to do with it. Uh, the one thing about that property is it does have some drainage issues because there's a lot of water coming out the back. Off the back of the hill, like springs. It's cra, even Marie White's house, um, you know, David, when he owned, had to spend a lot of money putting curtain drains in and stuff. So I, I'd like to look at it just to make sure we're not buying a, a, a drainage issue or wetlands. I don't even know if it's wetland. I, wetlands is strange because it's, um, not based on whether it's a swamp or a river. It's based on soil type. And a lot of wetlands, you don't even know the wetland. Um, till you get a soil scientist out there to see if it's, uh, classified as a wetland soil. So, you know, I'd want to do due diligence. Absolutely. Right?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Makes sense. Yep.
Uh, actually, is it, is it proper? Can I ask, uh, since, um, you know, we have, uh, a squire on the phone that would like to speak to that for a minute. Is that allowed to do?
I don't know the answer.
Um.
Not technically, I think, but.
Not technically, but.
Okay.
He's brought it to the, he's brought it to the board. He's got a right to.
Yeah.
He's got a right to say, you know.
Any questions you folks might have, uh, I'd be happy to try and field for you.
Yeah, I, um, thank you.
And this is Craig.
Craig, it, as far as I know, looking at the wetland maps, and I know them like the back of my hand, there are no wetlands on that prop, property.
There's a spring on Ray Booth's property, just on the other side of the stone wall. It,
That's right.
The, the corner of the property closest to, um, Dave Peters', uh, Helen Miller's is, does get wet, but it does not stay wet. I, you know, there is water on the property. Can't deny that.
Okay. Yeah. So, so we do our due diligence. We make sure that, um, but, but I, I am very thankful for your offer. I think it's a great thing.
Well, you know, we've, uh, we, we don't want to have to do it, but we, we're, we're in a position now that we need to focus on taking care of dad, dad's home. Um, and we need to, and that's, that's kind of what it's there for. Focus on taking care of dad, dad's home, um, and we need to, and that's, that's kind of what it's there for.
Are you on a relation to Bud Squire, who was my favorite person on?
Bud Squire is Uncle Bud, Bud Squire is my dad's uncle, he's my great uncle.
Thank you.
So we're, we're, we're in the Roxbury Squires, you know.
Yeah.
And, um, so my sister, who's Anne's iPhone, she's, she's here too, um, we would. Love to see the town be able to do something with it, um, you know, we would, it would just be a, the. Death of a legacy if, if somebody bought it and built an outrageous house there.
Yeah, no, that's great, that's great.
Yeah, it's really.
Yeah, I miss Bud, Bud was a.
Oh, Bud was fantastic, yeah. There was one day I broke down in front of his house.
What, uh, Rob Gorgon did to the barn, it just.
Oh, it looks great.
I, I wish Bud was around to see it, you know.
Yeah.
Too bad, but.
But, uh, I don't know, is there anything else I can do for you guys while you're down here?
I think that's all, I mean, Pat, as you know, if we move forward, we'd have to go into executive session to really discuss this further.
I, I almost think, um, that we should probably, you know, let's walk the property. Unless at the next meeting, go into executive session, when we're a little bit more educated about what the property is, I would like to look at it. Um, just with your eyes, Russ, uh, cause you can probably tell a lot more than, I mean, you're a more educated eye than I am with this.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, and we don't want to have an assessment done right now. I don't think we need to go into executive session until we have an assessment and we need to make a decision whether we're gonna buy it or not.
Agreed.
So, so everybody's aware, we have, um, uh, I think, I think Brian Neff put in the uh, approval for survey. Um, we're having it surveyed both lots, um, we're having it perk tested, we're having it all, you know, all that. Legwork will be done, so you guys will know exactly what you're looking at when you walk over there.
Oh, that's great. Okay.
Okay, great.
Do you know when that will be?
Uh, it should be within ten days of two days ago. That's when the check was cashed.
Is that Brian? That, that's ten days of ten days ago, you know?
Well, Brian, Brian got, um, T. Michael Alexander or something from Washington.
Yep, yeah, he's a surveyor.
Yep, he's, he's gonna do the work, um, for us, you know, I've, I've already paid him, so he said ten days from deposit, so.
Great.
That's in the works.
Okay, all right, excellent.
Well, I appreciate you speaking, Craig, thank you very, very much.
Yeah, so do I, thank you.
At some point, let's, uh, let's try and get to, together, and I'd like to walk with you, Russ, I'd still like to do that.
Yeah.
Even though the survey will be important.
You're okay with that, right, Craig? We could just go trotting on your property.
To be, to be quite honest, I'd like to be there with you.
Okay.
If you let me know, I mean, you can do it on your leisure, I don't care, but you know, if you want me there.
We'll let you know when, if you can make it somehow, sometimes it's very hard to get three or four people on the same date, same page. Okay, yep.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Awesome, uh, thank you. Um, the next, uh, order of business, appointment of Robert Michael Epps. Uh, as school resources, resource officer, he was already vetted. Um, by, you know, by the, by the school district, um, so I'm just looking for a motion to approve. Uh, he will be accepted by Washington Bridgewater as well as Roxbury.
I make a motion of proof.
Uh, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Robert Michael Epps is now our school resource officer. Um, next thing on the agenda was a hous- housing plan steering committee update, Kim, do you have anything, uh, updates on that?
Uh, well, at this point, we are, um, looking at, uh, possible solutions. To include in the plan that came up at the forum, uh, that we held for the town, uh, that was, uh, well attended. Uh, and we were very happy with that, um, I, I know several people who have looked, gone back and looked at that, uh, recording. Several times and passed it around so that people could educate themselves on the information, and I think it, uh, it went well. Um, and so we came up with a, uh, with an outline that we're using, and Jocelyn, who's the consultant. Will be, uh, kind of organizing some of that information, uh, that we collected at the last meeting, and then presenting it. For our meeting in March, which is on the seventeenth of March. Um, we are looking, uh, at either April or May to have another public forum. When we have a draft of the plan, uh, take, uh, ready for people to look at, and so we'll, I'll let you know. You know, when we're, uh, ready to do that. Um, I tried to, you know, we're, Roxbury and a whole bunch of other towns are kind of late to the game. On getting started on this, because it takes a long time, like the P O C D. You know, C D is a lot more, um, uh, a lot more depth. But we're trying to push to getting it done as close to the date, due date as possible, which is June. Um, and it may, might be a month or two after that, just because of logistics of getting it done, so.
And thanks for doing that, Kim, I know, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, it's, uh, thank you very much, I can get, and it's, uh, it ties in nice to my work on zoning, so.
Yep, absolutely. Lucky to have you, we really are.
Great job, thank you. Um, next up is, uh, Bridge and Culvert Updates, um, so our most active bridges, I guess I should say. Um, Davenport is under contract, we're looking at, uh, starting that, um, right around the June timeframe, so we're trying to coordinate that. With the school schedule, so it has as little impact as possible. Um, we're gonna try and get it done through the summer, it is a hundred and fifty days is the contract, but I think we're looking at other ways to try and reduce that. Um, Botsford, I'm still working on that, um, we're basically waiting for everything to thaw. Um, so we can take a look at what the mortar is inside, uh, as well as some more testing, um, and I'm working with a local mason, I think I'd mentioned. Uh, with that. Um, Squire Road, the, uh, bridge that, uh, we'll be doing as a town ourselves. Um, Squire Road is, uh, in the design portion right now. Um, and I've just, uh, signed the contract to have the fine, the, uh, file, the remaining eight. Bridge assessments completed, so that packet will be completed like we had spoke about.
Right.
Um, so they're all gonna be looked at.
What's the timeframe on, on those, um, evaluations?
They're gonna actually do it, um, this spring into summer. Um, and actually, because we all, we did it all at once, and they're doing other work in the area, um, they dropped it from two thousand per bridge to eighteen hundred per bridge. Um, so by doing it all together, we actually saved some money, so it looks like we're gonna get at least one of them done, uh, by ourselves, so. Um, yep. Um, actually, so speaking of which, um, we've been working on budget and capital expenses, and.
Can I back up and ask another question about? I'm sorry, Russ had brought up, um, something at the last meeting or the one before about. Uh, culverts that we don't necessarily notice that might need repair.
Well, I'm, I'm inspecting all those, and what I see needs an engineer, I'm gonna let you know.
Okay.
Yep.
Right, so far so good, um, Bacon Road is a, Bacon Road gotta get done. Um, but that's not something you need an engineer for.
That's my point, exactly.
Right, and, and the town could do that work and save a lot of money. It's one of those where it's not even worth getting a grant for, cause grants add cost, unfortunately.
Absolutely, and it, it, it's very similar to, uh, Painter Hill, uh, we never would have saved all that money. Uh, if we had gone for the whole grant process, let alone the time and everything else, um, I think we saw the benefit to the town.
Yeah, you really need to evaluate what you want to go for, for grants and what you don't, and, and. You, you need to make that assessment. Bacon Road is one where we don't need to go for grants. We should put it in the budget, the budget's coming up.
Mm-hmm.
Right? One thing I, I had a complaint about, and not many about the former board, cause the. Barbara and Jim are great, but one thing that I, and just want you to consider this. I, I wanted to see roads budgeted separately in the budget, not just this big lump of money. And nobody knows what it's gonna be used for, or what the cost of what we're, we're planning on doing. And if you want to do that, we really need, I think Grassy Hill Road is a big problem with drainage.
Oh, yeah.
And, and Bacon Road, there's two culverts that really, they need to be changed out within the next year, in my opinion. I, I, I'd like to get costs on that, I know I'm putting work on my poor friend Pat, but, and I'll help. And, and it doesn't need to be a bid, you get a, you get a couple contractors out there and say, how much to replace this culvert? And they give you prices, um, Grassy Hill Road needs, needs a design though, and that's something that. Either local engineers or, or Cardinal, who I'm very comfortable with, should go out as soon as possible, as soon as the snow is gone. And give ideas on what kind of drainage needs to be there, and what, what the potential cost could be. At least you could get it in the budget separately.
Yeah.
Now, Barbara never liked that, and then always did a whole, um, road upgrade budget, and you never knew. What it was for, I, I thought it, look, it worked. Um, she did a great job with our roads at work, I just think it's a more efficient process to really understand what roads you're gonna fix. How much it's gonna cost, and it's in the budget.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I brought it up, only because you had brought, you had mentioned it, Russ, and we're coming up to the season where we have to add. All of those projects, and, and if there's something that's very pressing, like you, you're bringing up Bacon Road, that, that'll be in this twenty-two, twenty-three. Year, that we'll need to make sure we have it set aside.
Those are the three, and I talked to the town group, crew, and they absolutely agree with me. Now, I'd love to see Garnet get upgraded, but ah, it's fine.
My other, my other concern, um, for rebuilding, in addition to, you know, grassy and bacon. Uh, and, and by the way, you remember I'm working with Doug DeVest on the local roads.
Oh, good, good.
That's, that, when it comes to.
Like Doug a lot.
Road construction, um, we've already met out at some things, it was kind of like working with, um, Mark Murray as a mason, you know, literally a local guy. Um, and really wanting to help the town and save the town money. Um, I would arguably say East Flag Swamp also is, uh, probably one of the worst roads, uh, in town by far. Um, so I'd like to look at that one as well, it's just a mud pit, and we have put a lot of work into it, but at a certain point. We're gonna have to put some kind of firmer base in there, cause it's just, uh, and I, and I'm not sure what the answer is, that's why we need to bring in somebody that knows.
Right, and, and before. Before the twenty-four years ago, what the town did is fix things, fix things, fix things, and never corrected the problem.
Yeah.
And, and, and even the last board, we're a little guilty of some of that, but we really got to the point where spend the money. Fix it right, and Garnet Road is an example, we put drainage in finally, and believe me, Pat, they were up here. A- after every storm, it made no sense, you know, throw more riprap in, and, but they finally put in basins. And the roads ho- held up really well.
Yeah, yeah, so right now, that's, it's true, Grass, Grassy Hill and East Flag, we're dealing with every, and, uh. East Woods also, that whole, that backside.
Yeah, I was on, uh, East Flag Swamp just on Saturday, and it was, it, it was rough, I mean, we just need a size.
Four-wheel drive only.
Yeah.
It's, it's been bad.
Four-wheel driving horses. That's it.
So, uh.
You know, a lot of people on, uh, East Flag Swamp wanted to pave it right up to where it's paved, and I, I'm not opposed, but. Um, the people on the road need to get together, they've been told this, that the Board of Selectmen was not gonna make that decision, it's up to them. And they come to the board and request that, and if they could get the votes on the road, which is, could now be done online. But last time we did the vote, it was a tie, and a tie is a loss.
Right.
But, but it's, so you have people on that road who really want it paved, and then you have people who wanna ride their horses down it, walk it with their dogs. So I get it, at Garnet, we don't want to pave because people will be smashing it to each other, so.
Yeah, I, it, there's, 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 there's quite a few, Garnet is always fun to drive on, even there's Welton too, uh, which also has, you know, where it hits three seventeen. You know, they drive in these roads every day, I, I could tell you exactly where the issues are.
Exactly.
Thank God, I got a pickup truck now, um, but anyhow. Um, so right now, so that's good news, because I'm gonna, that's means I'm gonna restructure a little bit more with the capital expense, but you know, as, as, uh. I've been kind of talking about, you know, rebuilding the trucks, um, possibly rebuilding the loaders, but that's ending up being a higher expense than I thought. And it might be worthwhile to just either buy something used or something that's in better shape. Um, right now, the capital expense budget is, uh, one point one eight six. Um, last year it was four hundred and nineteen thousand, but the win is that if you take out. The seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars that's being held for Davenport. I've actually lowered the capital expense budget as of now, so it looks like a bigger fig- figure, but we have to have. The full amount for that bridge already allocated into this year, and then we get fifty percent of it back. From our, from our grant, so.
Yeah, makes no sense.
See some numbers that are a little bit bigger, but it's all effectively working, so, uh, Kim's been amazing. Um, and actually, we're meeting again, uh, on Thursday to have another budget day.
Yeah, Kim Barron, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say.
Like, I'm not doing that.
But we're lucky to have Kim Barron too, she's, she's really awesome.
She's amazing, she's amazing.
Um, okay, so that's where I am, so I'll, I'll have more, uh, more updates as to, uh, the budget. Uh, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, so Fire Marshal report, Fire Marshal report is, uh, you know, pretty easy, they're continuing to work with Second Act Farm. Uh, on a resolution for their sprinkler system, uh, and the office is waiting for a correction report on Raven Rock Road Sprinkler System. Um, Janet has submitted her budget, and it was submitted with no changes. Um, and it's been an extremely uneventful month for the Fire Marshal's office, was her last line.
Excellent.
Uh, for the resident troopers, uh, report, uh, we've had, uh, two criminal, uh, non-criminal investigations. Two untimely deaths, three accidents, thirteen infractions issued, and this is the big number, not only thirteen infractions. But forty-nine written warnings.
Excellent.
Two hundred, uh, miscellaneous requests, so we're starting to see that number go up, um, which is nice.
Good.
Um, do we need a motion to accept those?
I'll make a motion to accept those.
I'll second.
All in favor? Um, and then, uh, I do have one other thing for other business. Um, we actually, I need to be appointed a voting member of H, H R R A.
That's right, but do we need to add that to the agenda?
I think, I think we probably do, don't we?
Yeah, I think the safest way is to add it to the agenda, make a vote.
I make a motion to add, uh, the H R R A appointment of Patrick to the agenda.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to appoint Patrick to the H R R A board. Is it the board, Patrick?
It is, it is.
To the H R R A board, that's my motion.
All right, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You, you sure you want to do that, Patrick?
I, I.
You may want to appoint me, I don't know. It's a lot of work.
On second thought, no, and actually, this, so this is, uh, this term would expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, just for record sake.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that. Um.
I have, I have something when you're done.
I have nothing else.
Oh, okay, um, so I attended a. I, I attended a board event meeting last night, uh, on Zoom, and they went over all kinds of things, you know, in terms of, um. COVID updates, et cetera, and one of the things, just some, a couple of things that stood out to me. Um, one is, uh, there's a, a title of one section called environmental support, which they considered. Related to how they're handling COVID, and it was, um, there's a fresh air break, you know, for kids to go outside. Um, windows will be open, and she said, this Megan Bennett said, windows will be open in classrooms, and students should dress warmly. So it made me. So it made me again realize, you know, Patrick and I had gone around to, I went to at least two of the elementary schools and got a tour of some things that needed updates and whatnot. And just, you know, thinking about as we move ahead, whatever long range plan there is for the schools, both Booth in particular, because that's in our town, to be updated in such a way to provide with the kids and staff and faculty need. And that is, um, some of this environmental support, what they're talking about. And it tied in with what the Finance and Operation Committee uh, Chair happened to mention is he was concerned about, and I'm reading my notes here, but concerned about the lack of support for fixing the school buildings instead of just patching. And, um, by the administration of the three towns. So. You know.
That's a little strange.
Um, well.
Not very.
Not very strange. No. Um, then Patrick, you can speak to that probably more, but.
I, I also met with, uh, Jim and Curtis and, uh, Megan and, um, yeah, I, I also agree. I wonder how much fixing and band-aid, um, we're going to get, we're going to spend millions of dollars and we're still not going to have an H V C system. I worry about, uh, the portable air conditionings and retro, retrofitting them, uh, to windows. I, you know, there's, there's not a good clean air system. And if any of that legislation passes, um, it's going to be multi-million dollar investments. Um, I think we at some point need to look at, um, replacing the buildings or at least, you know, a, a huge overhaul or basically start from scratch. Um, because there, you know, in, in many towns, you know, there was a, you know, a big boom where people build, you know, schools in the 50s and 60s. We're dealing with buildings that are over a hundred years old. And we're continuing to patch them. Um, so I would honestly be on the same page as Meg, Megan with that. Um, I'm not sure we're going to get the town support on the other sides though.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we, we remember building the elementary school, how much, how divisive that was. How many meetings there were.
Right.
Um, and Roxbury is the one who stopped it, if you looked at the vote.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Right.
But, but I, I think that plan was flawed because it was in a wetland.
Yeah, I know.
Like Greg Kava said, you have more chance of getting this approved in the middle of the Sheppaug River than you do on that property. And then they spent $18,000 to hold the property. There's a lot of mistakes. Um, it, I, I guess I say that because years ago was a lot worse than it was now. I, I mean, that school had mold in it and they were doing nothing about it. The Booth Free sign had the, had the bee hanging down for months. It, it, the new people that they brought in after that have done a much better job of maintaining the buildings.
Yeah, Don is amazing. He's a.
Yeah.
And I would agree. I would agree. But at a certain, at a certain point, there's, you know, power issues. There's, you know, asbestos floor under three layers. There's, you know, the, the, the ceilings are falling down. So some have drop ceilings, some don't. I mean, I, I wonder how much renovation can be done over time that at a certain.
Right. And are you throwing money into the wind? Would you do that with your house? I get that. I, I, but I think when we get to that point, we really need to think wisely about combining at least Booth and Burnham. Because unless you build small schools, but whether you build it smaller or a little bigger, as you know, Pat and Kim.
Yeah.
The price isn't really, you know, it's the core, the core price that, um, you're going to go from.
Yeah.
But I love that school. I, I'm, you know, all four of my kids went through there and, um, it, the, the, forget the brick and the mortar, the feeling in that school.
Right.
And the, the excitement and the, uh, chemistry is what I love about it.
Yeah.
But, but then again, I say that, but I can't forget the brick and the mortar either. Now they're saying keeping windows open. What's that going to do to our oil cost?
That's exactly the point.
Especially since oil is going to go up to like eight bucks a gallon if, if things keep going the way they are.
Yep.
So that concerns me.
I agree.
I brought it up only because it's not something that, you know, we can do anything about right now, but it is long range planning and that's something that I think we, the three of us can do a good job at.
Yeah.
Put our heads together and, and, uh, move forward in some kind of direction.
I'd support that a hundred percent.
Yeah. And thank you for taking the time, Kim, because I know it. We never did that the last board and Barbara actually switched the meeting so we could attend. And then nobody went. So we went back to, we went back to Monday.
You know, it's, my heart is there. It's my whole career. So it's one of those things why, you know, I, I enjoy it. I do. So.
I'm going to walk schools with you, Kim, and I'm going to walk wetlands and fields with Russ. There you go. I'll take you both through the public works garage.
Yeah, I love that.
There you go. We all got our little niche.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. So any, any other business?
Nope.
I want to thank you both and thank everyone who, uh, joined this call tonight. I appreciate it. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you next month. Have a great night.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.